I know, so I was thinking about that.
Yeah, that's true.
Because I can't always read the name.
That's true.
Yes, it is.
It's going to come in as one to five.
I do, that's what I'd say.
Yeah.
Two Ricks now.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be.
Rick and Rick, who's Kelly Rick?
Oh, you're saying.
Oh, we got the Rick. We have two new Ricks.
All right, would you all raise your right hand, please? Aye.
Aye.
Bob Scrivener.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of city councilman.
For the office of city councilman.
Of the city of Jefferson.
Of the city of Jefferson.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of the laws of the state of Missouri.
Provisions of the law of the state of Missouri.
The charter of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
The charter of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
And all ordinances of the city.
And all ordinances of the city.
And will faithfully demean myself in office.
And will faithfully demean myself in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and take the pictures.
I'm good.
All right, make it official.
I know.
Which, 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 uh, which representative?
A new one?
Oh, I'm not in the city.
Oh, you're not in the city.
Now, I'm just a city busybody.
Are you?
Yeah.
I am so proud, yes, that certainly is.
Yeah.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we would like to welcome you to the second meeting tonight of our brand-new formed city council. First, we'll call the meeting to order by doing so, and we'll have roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye, here.
Carol.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivener.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone. We do have a quorum tonight, and I'd like to especially welcome Rick Prather, Rick Mahalovich, and Larry Henry, our new councilman here this evening, and also re-elected Ms. Carrie Carroll, Mary, excuse me, Carrie Turgeon Carroll, I'm reading off a script here, and Councilman Bob Scrivener, congratulations on your reelection. Next, we'll move on to nominations and election of the president pro tem. At this point in time, we will entertain motions for a pro tem. Mr. Bray.
I nominate Bob Weber.
It's been moved and seconded. Bob Weber, other candidates, please. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. All in favor of Mr. Weber, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Bob, congratulations. Next, we will have nominations and elections of our planning and zoning rep and alternate, and also the board of adjustment rep and alternate. And I believe, the clerk could tell me if I'm wrong, I think normally tradition has been that the rep for planning and zoning is the alternate for board of adjustments and vice versa. Okay? At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion for the liaison to planning and zoning. Councilman Schulte.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to elect Councilman Mahalovich to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Other nominees, please. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Rick. Rick's been on planning and zoning for how many years, Rick? Okay, so you've got it down pat, and you'll do us well. Appreciate you stepping up to the plate so soon. Next, as far as the board of adjustments, we need a representative for that. Nominations, please. Councilman Bray.
I nominate Bill Lubert, board of adjustment.
Bill had, Bill Lubert has been nominated and seconded. Discussion, or I'm sorry, other candidates, please. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Bob, congratulations. Next, we will have appointments by the mayor. First of all, we have our standing committees, which are part of our charter, the administration committee, the finance committee, public safety committee, public works and planning committee, and annexation committee. At this point in time, we will entertain a, I'm sorry, we next have underneath B, the 2012, 2013 liaison and board commissions, and that was passed out earlier before the meeting. Dr. Pope has agreed to chair the USS Jefferson City Sovereign Committee, and obviously our planning and zoning and board of adjustments representative were just chosen. Okay? On the standing committees, I'll go back to that. Administration committee?
All right, technical error on my part. Administration committee would be Carrie Carroll, Larry Henry, Mr. Mahalovich, Rick Prather, Bob Scrivener. Annexation committee would be a committee of the whole, and Bob Scrivener has asked to chair that. Finance committee would be Bray, Carroll, Pope, Schulte, and Weber, and Mr. Schulte is asked to chair that. Public safety committee, Henry, Mahalovich, Lubert, Pope, and Prather. Pope has asked to chair that. Public works and planning committee, Bray, Lubert, Schulte, Scrivener, and Weber, and Councilman Scrivener has asked to chair that, and going back up to admin, Carrie Carroll is asked to chair the administration committee.
At this point in time, we will entertain a, I'm sorry, we next have underneath B, the 2012, 2013 liaison and board commissions, and that was passed out earlier before the meeting. Dr. Pope has agreed to chair the USS Jefferson City Sovereign Committee, and obviously our planning and zoning and board of adjustments representative were just chosen. Okay? On the standing committees, I'll go back to that. Administration committee?
All right, technical error on my part. Administration committee would be Carrie Carroll, Larry Henry, Mr. Mahalovich, Rick Prather, Bob Scrivener. Annexation committee would be a committee of the whole, and Bob Scrivener has asked to chair that. Finance committee would be Bray, Carroll, Pope, Schulte, and Weber, and Mr. Schulte is asked to chair that. Public safety committee, Henry, Mahalovich, Lubert, Pope, and Prather. Pope has asked to chair that. Public works and planning committee, Bray, Lubert, Schulte, Scrivener, and Weber, and Councilman Scrivener has asked to chair that, and going back up to admin, Carrie Carroll is asked to chair the administration committee.
At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve those appointments, and the boards and adjust, excuse me, and the boards and commissions. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Carrie.
Thank you. I would like to add to this list the conference center committee, and it would be just similar to the annexation committee where it's shown to have a committee of the whole for purposes of getting a next meeting date on the calendar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Drew, do you have any, what, what's the protocol for that? Well, I guess first of all, that would be an amendment, or what is that, what she just meant?
I suppose it could be an amendment. That, the, that's actually an ad hoc committee. These are all the standing committees. I don't, there's not a, you could, you could appoint it. It would be somewhat unusual because you're dealing with the standing committees, but certainly if you want to appoint it, you can.
I think at this point in time, I would just as soon wait till after our town hall meetings and stuff that's coming up, unless there's members of the council that feel otherwise. Okay, going back, Carrie.
I feel otherwise. I'd like to see it get moving sooner than later. I know that having the town hall meetings will be helpful, but I think it would be helpful first to get the council on board, especially with some newer members, to just catch them up to speed with the history of kind of where we've been.
Okay. All right, Drew.
I suppose as I ponder this just a moment longer, the mayor, you would have the ability to do this because these are your appointments. So although certainly you're welcome to do it, and if the council wants to, that's certainly always okay, but I guess at this point, it would be your call since you're the, you're the body that appoints those committees with the consent of the council.
Okay. All right, any other comments under A and B as far as appointments to the mayor? There's currently a motion on the floor. Bob.
Did the, we are voting on these in block. Are we voting on the members of the committee? Are we voting on the members of the committee and the chairman, as you?
Just the, just the members.
Just the members.
I was just simply trying to announce who had came forward, who had come forward as far as who wanted to be chair.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on A and B as presented? Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next, we will have miscellaneous agenda items. Mr. Lockwood, if you could come to the podium, please. Thank you for being here tonight. Tonight is a proclamation for Arbor Day, whereas the trees in our city create a urban forest, a pleasant and healthful environment for man by providing beauty, energy savings, better air quality, spiritual substance, and are all living symbols of hope for a bright future, and inspiration for young and old. And whereas the state and the nation has traditionally set aside a special day called Arbor Day to plant trees and reflect on these blessings. Now therefore, I, Eric J. Strumpf, mayor of Jefferson City, do hereby proclaim April 21st as Arbor Day. Bill, on behalf of Parks and Rec, would you give any comments?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and I would take this opportunity also to remind everyone of the workday schedule for this Saturday, April 21st, which is Arbor Day. Part of that work, which is being organized by ServeJeffersonCity.com, involves some work in planting some trees, and our Arbor Day ceremony will actually be held out on the West Edgewood Greenway about 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, and we want to thank all the other volunteers who are coming out to help in the downtown area with some tree well maintenance and other things, and invite those who may not have had a chance to consider yet to certainly take the opportunity to volunteer, and that's ServeJeffCity.com if they want more information.
All right, Bill, thank you very much, guy. Okay, one other thing that's not on our agenda that I forgot earlier, and that's a report from Nathan Nicholas.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Council, the, just like to formally introduce Drew Hilbert as our new city councillor. As you know, we had a process with a nationwide search. We had a number of good quality applicants, and we're very pleased that Drew, our own homegrown, as it were, rose to the top of that very prestigious list, and I think that with Drew's filling in, we now have our senior staff complete and are ready to start forward with the new council.
All righty, thank you, Nathan. I also might point out, this would be the first time in a long time we haven't had a staff member with the title interim before their name, so. Drew, welcome.
Can I just say, I'm also not a QP.
I was going to point that out, but you did for me. Thank you very much.
And yet, you got the job anyway.
And, well, never mind. Okay, moving on, number seven, any presentations from staff, consultants, or invited guests? Number eight, announcements of upcoming meetings and events. Town hall meetings, we're calling Michelle Gleba.
Thank you, mayor. The city will hold three town hall meetings aimed at providing residents with an opportunity to provide input on some of the top projects facing the city, such as the conference center, MSP repairs, a multipurpose center, and parking. The public will also have an opportunity to comment on the types of projects and issues they believe should be city priorities. The first town hall meeting will be held Tuesday, April 24th, at Lewis and Clark Middle School. The second meeting is Thursday, April 26th, at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, and the third meeting is Tuesday, May 1st, at Lewis and Clark Middle School. Each town hall meeting starts at 6:30 PM and will be held in the commons area at each school. All of these dates and locations are listed on the city's website at JeffCityMo.org.
Thank you, Michelle. We'd also like to invite all the city council members and staff to that. Getting that public input, I think, will help move us forward before we do our retreat. Nathan, have you set a date for a retreat yet?
I have not.
Okay. I think you've been kind of waiting on that, as far as these meetings to come about, so those will be forthcoming, and we look forward to all the public input, and as Michelle said, there will be time for public input, which you might call a open-mic session of the, of the night, which I think is very important for us to hear from our public. Number nine, is anyone here to speak about specific bills or resolutions? Seeing none, nothing in our consent agenda this evening. Now we'll have bills introduced. We'll have first reading of our first bill of this year, 2012-1.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by revising the duties of the former Department of Community Development.
Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you'll recall, about a year ago, we had a Department of Community Development which encompassed both public works and planning and protective services. Some months ago, we divided those into two, and in doing so, we had to revise the code to take out all the references to the Department of Community Development. Unfortunately, we missed a couple. There was one in liquor code, one in, or there were several in the transit section. And in addition, when we did those revisions, there was an inadvertent assignment of, of the construction of streets to planning and protective services, and it should have been public works, so this bill just tries to clean up those mistakes or errors.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Hilbert? Okay, moving on, 2012-2, Roger Schwartz. First reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Jefferson Asphalt Company for the 2012 mill and overlay project.
Bob, did you have a question on the, on the earlier motion, on the earlier bill? I'm sorry.
Which, which bill?
I'm, I'm trying to, trying to do sign language with.
Oh, Roger, go ahead and present the whole, the whole thing, and then I will have a question for you. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem.
Take bids on our annual street improvement program, the low bid that was submitted by Jefferson Asphalt Company. The base bid that they provided was $948,576.18. This would be funded from both sales tax E and then a new portion from sales tax F that starts this April. This would allow improvements on portions of 12 different streets within the city, and the bid is actually about $3 per ton less than what the bids were last year. So that's a good thing, and in addition, we are also requesting approval for a budget transfer of $196,000 to complete three additional streets that were listed in the bid package as alternate A. We were very fortunate that Mother Nature was very good to us this winter, and we have that amount of money left in our snow removal budget that would not be used, so we're requesting approval for the alternate A package as well to bring the total to $1,140,255.06.
Councilman Scrivener.
Roger, there's been a question raised about the $191,000 being used as overlay and about the appropriateness of actually transferring that. So I guess my question to you, as a sponsor of this bill, I'm prepared to amend the bill to remove the $191,000 from the bill tonight, and then go through a process of utilizing a supplemental appropriation. How will that affect the, the city's ability to get this done in a timely way if I do that? And also, will it affect our ability to get it done at the quoted price?
I certainly believe we can still get it done, and if, if you should take out that portion which is alternate A, that, that money simply stays in the account, and we cannot use it for anything else.
It'll, excuse me, it will be in the salt and materials account. However, it will, at the end of the year, revert back into the general fund.
That is correct.
Which is, is what has been stated as maybe a superior alternative to increasing the amount of the overlay.
Right.
So.
It would depend on what the council wants to choose as, as the priority for that money.
Well, excuse me, Bob, are you, are you talking about chemicals and salt?
Yes, chemicals and salt.
I had a brief conversation with our finance director about this, and I would assume going into next year's budget that we would basically leave, by leaving the number alone in next year's budget, we would, we would always kind of be working ahead of ourselves, if that makes sense. Is that right, Steve? In other words, since we already have the materials here?
Well, we do. The $191,000, if the council chooses not to add that to the overlay program, then that money stays in our account for the remainder of the year. If there's no other budget transfer to utilize that funds, then that goes to the fund balance. Also, then, and so it goes, as does any remaining revenue funds, it goes back to the fund balance, and we can always use the same amount next year as the appropriated amount at the higher level, which is what we used this year, and, you know, then, then we will be covered probably next year.
We'll be, we'll be building in some, a safety net, Bob, since we have, since we haven't used as much as what we normally do.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
I mean, it's just like any other item that, where something, where money's appropriated and it's not all spent, it just becomes a, a part of the surplus that you go into the next year with. The, the question just becomes, I guess, and I think it will allow us to debate the appropriateness of it without jeopardizing the bill, so I don't have this in writing, and I know we like to do our amendments in writing, but I'm going to try to, to offer this amendment in such a way that it won't be too complicated. Where, under the summary, it says this bill authorizes a contract with Jefferson Asphalt for a base bid and an alternate A totaling $1,140,255.06, I would like to strike "and alternate A" those words and replace the amount of $1,140, or $1,140,255.06, and I'd like for Steve to verify these numbers. I've added the 579,105.68, and then the 369,470.50 together, and I came up, Steve, with 948,576.18, and, and Roger, that will allow us to, to do the base bid with that amount. And then any place in the, in the, in this amendment where it refers to the, the alternate, or not the amendment, but in this bill where it refers to that and authorizes it, I'd like to strike that as well. I don't, I haven't read through it word for word to tell you where that's at, but I think, I think making that change will.
Bob, let me ask you this.
Sure.
Since this is, this is first reading tonight.
Right.
As opposed to third reading.
It is.
So would you rather possibly make that in a written form before?
I, yes.
But beforehand in the next couple of weeks?
I prefer to do that, but I just didn't want debate.
Understand.
That I had heard between, with me and another councilman, I just didn't want that to be a part of tonight's discussion.
Okay.
All right.
So do you still want to make your amendment, or do you want to hold off for two weeks and make it written?
I'll wait.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, I don't care, it's up to the council, whatever you want to do, but if it's, if it's not clear on paper, it's a little bit tougher for.
Right, right. Okay. I, I will be making that amendment.
Okay, more to come. Larry, do you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. You're a little taller than the last guy, so. Actually, we have a person there now, because for a long time, we didn't have Dave there. Councilman Pope.
The discussion that we had in the interim was simply what I had hoped we would be able to do would be to have two separate votes. That's all I was asking, that we would have a vote on the 900-plus thousand, which is substantially more than we have funded in the past, and then additionally, what is, for all intents and purposes, not necessarily a transfer, but a supplemental. And last year, when we went through the budget process, we'd been, we had a long string of supplementals for salt chemicals and asphalt materials, and in last year's budget process, we decided to give both accounts plenty of money, and that's how the 400 extra got for overlay and a reasonable amount for chemicals. We were lucky with the winter, didn't have to spend it, but our discussion last budget period was, anything unspent was going back into general revenue. And you weren't here, Roger, and so just if you give us the opportunity to vote for the 900 plus and the additional, the 191, for a very popular program, that's all I had asked for, that we could have two separate votes.
Okay. Any, any other discussion on 2012-2? Councilman Lubert.
I wanted to make the point, and I want Roger to verify if I'm correct, that, as I understand, the supply of salt or the storage capability for salt and chemicals is full, and so there's no need for a summer expenditure this summer to fill that, so that money is available.
Yeah, when, when you look at the original budget that was approved for chemicals for snow removal, it was $275,000, so yes, we, we used some salt this winter, and we have completely filled up our storage, so we are ready, all ready for next winter with the amount of materials.
Okay, any other discussion on Mr. Scrivener?
Is transferring funds from one budget category to another one, is that unprecedented? Has that ever been done before?
No, it's done all the time.
It's done, it's done daily, or he wouldn't have staff.
Yes, budget transfer is, is something that we recognize that the department directors can do to transfer money from one line item to the other to supplement that, either from excess funds in that line item, or it's just a greater need in another line item. So budget transfers are done all the time.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, staff, or discussion amongst councilmembers? Okay, moving on, we'll have a first reading of 2012-3.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Mr. Schlitter.
Thank you, mayor. This bill would authorize two vehicles, a, the JCTV van and one of the single axle truck and plows to be declared surplus and to be disposed of. And I would also ask that, due to clerical error, the van that the JCTV is using is actually a 1989 van. It was incorrectly labeled as a 1998 van, so I would ask that that distinction be supported in the form of an amendment, or how would you like to do it verbally, that that's the only problem with it, but to make it an 89 instead of a 98.
I'll ask Drew, could you just do it as a Scrivener's error and be done with it?
You could, we just wanted to make sure it was a, the council knew what they were voting on.
Okay. Good enough, Steve?
That's all.
Unless the council wants to make an amendment, but kind of a typo, it's a typo, so. Okay, any other questions for Steve on 2012-3? Okay, moving on, resolutions, 2012-1. If you want to read the summary, please.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson City, Missouri, supporting the Jefferson City Police Department's application for a Missouri Department of Transportation traffic and highway
for a Missouri Department of Transportation Traffic and Highway Safety Division Grant Program and authorizing the city administrator to pursue activities to file the funding application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein.
Chief Schreder.
Thank you. That's a pretty effective explanation. But if awarded, the grant would be for $34,448. The grant provides for payment of overtime to officers who enforce laws prohibiting hazardous moving violations. And this represents the 10th year the police department would utilize this type of grant.
Okay, any questions for chief on 2012-1? At this point in time, we'll ask chief about, what's the main difference, Roger, in Resolution 2012-2? We're going to go back and vote on them, but...
The sum is slightly different and the purpose is to enforce, provide overtime payment to officers to enforce DWI, the DWI law.
Okay. Any questions? First of all, let's entertain a motion on 2012-1.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion, please. Any questions of chief on number one resolution of this calendar year, this council year? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we will have... We'll entertain a motion on 2012-2.
So moved.
I don't think we read it. Did you read it?
I counted his explanation as the reading, but we can go back and reread if you'd like.
Well, probably should.
Okay, we will. On the ball. Go ahead.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, supporting the Jefferson City Police Department's application for Missouri Department of Transportation Traffic and Highway Safety Division Grant Programs and authorizing the city administrator to pursue activities to file the funding application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein.
Okay, discussion on 2012-2. Actually, we'll entertain a motion first. I think it's been moved and seconded, let's do it again.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion on 2012-2. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich. Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber. Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a presentation from the gallery on other topics. Anyone in the gallery tonight with topics to talk about? Okay. Next, we'll move into council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Anything there? Ms. Carroll.
I have a... I still want to bring up, and I know it's not a presentation topic, but the earlier topic about the Conference Center Committee. And I think, I just want to say, I guess I'm just surprised that you wouldn't even at least appoint an ad hoc committee, which is just a committee of the council. So I just am really excited to be part of this new council. And in this new council year, I'm just... I think what I'm asking is just so simple that I'm just a little confused and surprised that you wouldn't just go ahead and appoint an ad hoc committee of the whole.
Okay, appreciate that, Carrie. The reason that I didn't do that tonight is that I think really until we have our town hall meetings and our retreat, I don't know if we know exactly what our conference center is going to be in the future. Whether it's a council... Whether it's a council of the whole committee, Carrie, whether it's a committee of some council members, developers, someone from out of town to do more studies. At this point in time, I'm just not sure. So that's the reason why, but I appreciate your comments. Moving on next, new business. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the 2012-2013 council meeting schedule. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Nathan has discussion.
Do we make a decision? Are we going to keep with the works, the regular work session schedule? Or are we going to go back to the old?
It was, it would probably be my intention. Do I normally set those? I think last time, we tried to change the work sessions to the fourth. Is that right? Monday of the month, because there was some conflict with different members because of, I think, a school board meeting on the second. If everyone's okay with the fourth, it'd probably be what we'd still do.
I think that is a yes.
That a yes? Okay. Any other discussion or comments or questions on the approval of the 2012-2013 calendar of our meetings? Councilman Weber.
I know last year I'd requested and it was maybe a month out, about the December... The first meeting in December, it usually conflicts, I think, with the Capitol Region Board of Governors, December 3rd. I don't know for sure if that's the date this year. Does anybody have that date down? Probably not.
Wonder if Janice would, by chance?
But I know several of us are Board of Governor members. And if we could possibly look at that December 3rd. I think we went to Tuesday night, I believe, last year. And I, you know, again, I'll leave it up to the pleasure of the council, but I would like to see us support that event if we could. And then I can't remember whether it was a holiday in February, a Monday that the city didn't observe, but the banks were off, the schools were off, and so forth. Was it President? Would it be President's Day? But I think we had a council meeting. It would be nice if we could possibly look at that one.
Okay, Bob. I think that's a... I think last year, we all... I think we agreed to do that, did we not? Or did staff just change it? I don't recall. Phyllis is telling me the council did, so... If that's a... Is that an amendment, Bob?
I'll throw it out for consideration. If you want to motion, I would view that we look at that Tuesday and December 4th, I think.
Okay. All those in favor of rescheduling our regular council meeting around Capitol Region's annual meeting? I need a second, I think.
Could I suggest we see if Ms. McMillan knows about the date?
Well, usually it's the first Monday in December. That's basically all I know without checking. I can check.
Okay.
I'm not sure either.
Councilman Bray, are you giving me a second?
No, I have a question of the maker.
Okay. I need a second first. Second, thank you. Councilman Bray.
Bob, do you know if that has been scheduled yet? Do we know in fact that there's a conflict? Or do we need to wait and see if there's a conflict?
I think it has been scheduled, but I don't have... I'm not for sure. But it usually is the first Monday of December, which would be a council meeting. So do we want to put a question mark and look at that at next meeting?
I would, of course, I can't make an amendment, but I will say this, Bob. Just really quick, a show of hands, who else serves on that board, on the council? I know Carrie's on it. Rick's, I think, going on it possibly. Dr. Pope's on it. And we're all invited and they're one of our largest suppliers in town. So if it doesn't become an amendment tonight, we can double check the calendar and I'll make sure that it's brought back before this body, before then. Okay? Good enough, Bob? All righty. Any other questions or comments on 2012-13 council meeting schedule? What was your second date, Bob? I'm sorry.
I can't remember. I think it was President's Day, possibly.
It was February 18th.
February 18th.
It's President's Day and scheduled council meeting.
As our calendar people look at that? See anything there, chief?
Schools are closed. I don't know, Lynn State, are they closed that day? Or not? You know? Doesn't matter. Just throw it out for discussion.
Okay, is there a second to Bob's second motion to make President's?
Second.
To move our meeting away from President's Day? I guess the quickest way to say it. Seconded by Councilwoman Carroll. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment, which is to move our meeting away from President's Day to the next day, that Tuesday, I'm assuming. I think we can do this by roll call or just by a voice count? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Do you have that, Mr. Administrator?
Yes.
Okay.
But we will still be open.
Okay. Any other changes? Okay, seeing none, we'll have roll call on our council meeting schedule.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passed.